Good morning. Welcome to this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, December 10, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna Peters Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 13 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board, you may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please take a moment to silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you very much. And just so everybody knows, we're having some technical difficulties today, so we will be doing voice votes. And I will be operating the clock, so if any member of the board notices that I have fallen down on that duty, please hit me with a spitball at any time. And I will respond accordingly. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Throw a spitball back? Is that what you do?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, also, welcome back Supervisor Serna.
Thank you.
And clerk.
Okay. For your items today, Consent Matters 1 through 30. I do need a motion to continue item number three. It's to approve a resolution certifying 16 county of Sacramento Melrose Community Facilities District annual reports.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
And then I have one note, that item 11, you're introducing an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 6.99.265 Title VI relating to limited service charitable feeding operation and adding food bank fee ordinance. You waived reading on this. You're going to waive reading and continue to December 17 for adoption.
Okay. And I do have one slip for item number 19, which I will hear the member of the public now, is Terry O'Sullivan here.
Item number 19, you're acting as the Carmichael Recreation and Park District. Approve an amendment to Carmichael Park Master Plan to shift two new bocce ball courts and determine that the prior negative declaration with the current addendum is adequate and appropriate. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Terry O'Sullivan?
Good morning.
Morning.
My mom had a vision. She's a Carmichael resident for 50 years.
Can you pull the microphones down a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
We better?
Yes.
Okay, good. She wanted bocce courts built in Carmichael Park. So she put up $5,000, which was a lot of money to her. And the project kind of just didn't go anywhere for a while. My brother and I have hosted an event, which we raised almost $5,000 towards this. The foundation of Carmichael Park, the Carmichael Park District has also donated funds. We really want this project to happen.
Thank you.
That's it.
Who can be against bocce ball? Come on. Thank you. Thank you very much. I have no other slips for any items on the agenda. Is there anything that the board would like to question?
I do. I'd like to, the record to reflect, I'm recusing from items two and three.
Okay.
Potential conflict of interest. So the request to speak does work?
Yes, it does.
Oh, sorry.
Hers doesn't work.
Oh, okay. I assumed it was the whole thing.
Yeah. Any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Natoli. A couple of different items. If you could call item seven, please.
Seven?
Seven. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I know. I'm not sure. Item seven, how's that?
Item seven is the Notice of Intended Public Auction of Tax Defaulted Property and Resolution Authorizing the Sale at Public Auction of Tax Defaulted Property.
Okay. Thank you. First, I want to express the appreciation to Mr. Lamera and others in the Department of Finance for making sure we had clear copies of maps that showed the actual parcels that are ones that would come under the notice of intended public auction of tax defaulted property. And so I want to thank our staff for that. Thank you, Mr. Gale, too. I know you followed up on that as well. The question I have is, just maybe a quick refresher, when somebody's primary residence is being offered for a public auction, what the process we use? I know that in the years past, we've had some discussion about not just the finance office or other officers that relate to the property transaction, but also what happens when, do we have social workers go out? Do we make contacts? What is the process we use when it's somebody's primary residence?
I'm going to have the Finance Director, Ben Lamera, answer that.
Okay.
Good morning, Ben Lamera, Director of Finance. I'm actually going to have Laura Jacobson from our Tax Collector's Office come up and walk through the steps of what we do with the primary residences.
Good morning. So I reach out to Department of Human Assistance, their homeless programs staff, Department of Health Services, Senior and Adult Services. I work with the program manager there. And I also work with the Department of Behavioral Health Services to help identify any residents who might need assistance either during the process or after the process.
And just, Laura, again, this isn't the first time that, obviously, primary residents, but if somebody's home, and again, there are many years delinquent in taxes, and so obviously, there's a legal process here. But understanding what you just said, who you work with, what would be the approach, though? I mean, is it, you know, do you send a letter? Do we go knock on the door? Do we have persistent? Again, because there may be some folks who, again, knowing that their world is, you know, going to change dramatically, if they have their wits about them, that, you know, what, so kind of walk through, maybe give an example. Obviously, I know you've, in the years past, have worked to help people get placed, but you know, oftentimes, there are situations that are beyond people's control, and they're, you know, facing the loss of what may have been their home for 30 or 40 years, from all I know.
Right. So every January, our staff goes out and makes personal contact to every property that has a home or structure on it.
Yep.
And we try and contact the residents there and discuss what their options could be, how we could help them get through the process, or, and we have resource guides we give out. And any information that they're asking about, we have those conversations. We also identify the people we think will have issues during or after the sale, and we give referrals to these other human assistants, health services, and behavioral health services.
Okay. Maybe just let me be a little more pointed about. So we make a referral, but in the case, say you have someone who's elderly, who may not be in the immediate harms way, but either there's not a clear understanding because of, you know, a mental illness, or, you know, lack of cognition as it relates to what's transpiring here, and if there's not wherewithal with other family members or any more money to redeem the back taxes. But, you know, even with your best efforts, if that home goes to sell, someone's going to be a new owner, and then you have this potential, not potential, you have a displacement. And so how do you cope with those situations, though? And again, I mean, that may not be a rare situation, but I trust that it does happen. So just give me a little more idea, kind of around, maybe even a situation where this occurred without, you know, identifying anybody, but...
Right. It is a rare occasion, because primary residents tend to stay on the list for several years while we're working with the residents to get loans or other financing options or finding another place to live.
Okay. So again, the key point you just made, then, that we work with folks, is even if they're on the list, doesn't mean necessarily they're going to be sold, although I think in a marketplace where, you know, residences in housing is, you know, such great demand, that, you know, there are those, obviously, looking to, you know, acquire homes and repair them, either for their own use or for rental or whatever. So, and again, maybe the last question on this piece, that with the primary residents, then, do, Ben, are you empowered, or Laura, to make the judgment to pull it off the list? If you understand some extending weight circumstances, I guess, you know...
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And that's a discussion we have with Carlos and Ben. When we're getting closer to the auction, we've, at that point, identified the primary residents during our visits in January. And then we also send letters again in January, reminding them that they're...
Yeah. And again, I recognize, you know, written communication, that's important, that's public notice, and it's a notice to people and so forth, but it's that personal contact, and again, I wasn't questioning that you do that, but I just think it's important to know, because, you know, when I see some new ones being added to the list, they're not in my district, but I, you know, I can recognize that's somebody's home, somebody is occupying that under whatever circumstances, and taxes haven't been paid, so they're delinquent on those. So, okay, well, that, I appreciate that. That helps, and I know that you're very sensitive about the folks and what their situation might be, so, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I had on that. I had one other item, Mr. Chair, but I don't know if there's any other questions on this item.
Are there any questions on that item?
Nope. Okay. Yeah. And then just the other item would be item 26, if you could call it real quickly, please. Okay.
Okay. We have another question on that item.
Yeah. There is, I think you called it item number 11. It's property owned by the Homeowners Association. Do you want the APN number or the item number?
No. Actually, we have been taking a look at that particular parcel and the outstanding bills.
Well, it just mentioned two years, so is it, they haven't been property taxed since 2011, or is it just 11 and 12?
So...
That I got.
Right. There were, there are outstanding property tax bills that go back to 2011, '12, and '12, '13. And there appears to be an error in there, and so we're going back and addressing that issue.
Okay, so...
That item will actually be removing from this list.
Oh, you're removing that by yourself?
Yes.
Okay. What kind of error, if I may ask?
It looks like it's an incorrect assessment. It was showing up as Sacramento County Stormwater Utilities, and we're, from what we can tell, it looks like an incorrect assessment.
Okay. It has quite a few structures on it, or what seem to be structures, and...
Actually, it's a common area. The structures are owned by actual property owners. And then the common area is the parking lot and, like, the landscaping around the areas.
So is it a mobile home park or something?
No. It looks like either townhouses? Or apartment complex?
Yeah. So...
Right.
Those are all townhouses, and...
Those aren't, those aren't, that's not included in that parcel. The parcel actually surrounds those. It's a common area...
So is it a land lease or something?
In that area. Pardon?
Is it a land lease?
It is, it's not a land lease, so it is townhouses. And then there is a parking lot, and it looks like the grass area that surrounds the structures. So the structures are individually owned. And then the common area is what they share. The parking lot, the grass area, probably the fences, the gates, et cetera.
Didn't Senator Feinstein have something like this happen a few years ago, where the city foreclosed on the common area on her house around her, in her neighborhood?
Yeah.
So you're foreclosing on the grass and the asphalt?
We're not foreclosing.
You're not going to?
We're pulling this from the list.
I don't think we want to be selling that property, if anyone would buy it. Okay.
Not at this point.
Okay. So how long will you pull it off? And what will you do about it?
Actually, there, once we address the issues with those assessments, the property will be removed from the list.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was still waiting. Item 26, if I could just, very quickly.
Item 26, retroactive authorization to take necessary steps to apply for and accept 2018 Proposition 68 groundwater planning grant funding of $750,000 in the Casumnes groundwater sub-basin, and to approve the appropriation adjustment request for $750,000.
Okay. I wanted to just pull this, because I want to thank our staff for their ongoing work in the basin. As noted in staff report, we're working with several, including folks from Amador County, but within the county, water and irrigation districts on developing the plan, the groundwater sustainability plan for that area. This is the second of two grants, and I know that Michael Peterson and Kerry Schmitz and Linda Dorn and others have been working very closely with folks in the area as relates to both the planning, but obviously, the necessary preparation leading up to when the law requires to actually have a groundwater sustainability plan. And I think this is an important step. Again, I have no problem with the retroactivity. I know it was a short deadline, and I'm, you know, I'm very supportive. I did want to ask, though, and maybe this is for Nav, Nav, I think it's probably time, shortly after the first of the year, for us to have the board, if there's agreement here, to have a update, a workshop, maybe on groundwater. I mean, the months are marching forward. We're working very hard with partners, but this has certainly broad implications for the county and for water users throughout the county. Obviously, in this case, it's focused on the southern part, the southern, eastern part of the counties, Sacramento County, the western part of Amador County. But I would ask if we could maybe have at least a workshop or some report, and some staff presentation to the board, and working through our current chair and incoming chair to see that we get that on, maybe in the February to March timeframe, if possible.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay. Good. But I support the item. Thanks very much for the time to speak to it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I have a statement on item 10, please.
Item 10, approve the retroactive reappointment of 19 initial members and appointment of three new members to the Steering Committee of the Reduction of African-American Child Deaths.
So first, I want to take the opportunity to thank those members of the permanent steering committee for their service. And I'd also like to make a request, I guess, of the CEO's office, so that he can direct the appropriate executive staff to, sometime near the beginning of the year, give me a briefing, please, on what we're doing to actively recruit for that steering committee. That was something that I thought was left absent in the board letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We also have a public speaker card for item number 10, so Frederick Gale.
Good morning, sir. Frederick Gale, 7336 Hurley, North Highlands. I'm probably an African, Ethiopian American of that sort. But I find number 10 rather insulting to me, really. I mentioned before, those who have read Alison Davis, American dilemma. Is this so difficult for us to solve? As a kid, probably one of the poorest countries, a county in the state of Alabama, and I think we had about five or six, five beta capitals from that little town or whatever. But why is this so difficult for us to solve? Do we have the wrong committee, or the wrong people, or what is it? Bit, wires, I can't remember, and every little place didn't have a doctor. Maybe we need to get another committee, get a new one who can solve some problems. We have UC Berkeley, or what have you. But it's something strange, but over and over, we invented the hydrogen bomb, et cetera. No polio. I grew up in FDR, we pennies and what have you. I think we could solve this if we had a different group to solve the problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Mr. Gale.
You bet.
Supervisor Serna.
Sure, I'd like to respond to Mr. Gale's comments.
Yeah.
While I appreciate his enthusiasm on the subject and interest in solving the problem, I would respectfully disagree that the inference that we're not actively trying to do so isn't actually producing the results that we set for ourselves nearly, what, eight, almost nine years ago. And I just would remind him and the viewing audience, those are in chambers, that we are making the kind of progress that we hoped for, in terms of not only the reduction in the number of real deaths in the African-American childhood population, but also in the disparities. And certainly would invite him to participate if he feels that there needs to be some amended participation, and whether it be the steering committee or the broader Black Child Legacy Campaign. I think there's a lot of room for community members to participate and contribute. It's a big tent. But again, I think it's one of the things that this county can be extremely proud of in terms of trying to tackle this issue. And quite frankly, it's another reminder for me to explain that this is not only succeeding in Sacramento County, but it's also being viewed nationally as a model for other counties. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any, that's all I see from the board, and I have no more speaker cards, so with that, I will take a motion on the consent calendar. So move by Director, or, sorry, Supervisor Natoli, second by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained? Next item, please.
Can I just say, before we go on, I want to thank the members of the Carmichael Parks Foundation for coming out today to support the amendment to their master plan. Nice to see you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 31, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Project Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing, Approval of Tax-Exempt Bonds and Loan Commitment.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board, Ann Nichols, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Project is requesting approval of a $50 million mortgage revenue bonds issuance and a $6.9 million loan commitment for the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the project. Following this item, the Director of Homeless Initiatives will present the board with this project as it relates to the Sacramento County and SHRA jointly issued request to partner on No Place Like Home developments to prepare for funding round two. Mutual Housing on the Boulevard is a new construction project located on the vacant site at 7351 Stockton Boulevard. There are 127 1-, 2-, and 3-bedroom units, including 67 homeless permanent supportive housing units, which were awarded project-based vouchers from SHRA, and 58 workforce housing units. The developer is Mutual Housing California. Mutual Housing Management will manage the property. A minimum of 20 hours per week of onsite resident services will be provided by Mutual Housing California. Supportive services will be provided by Department of Human Services and Lutheran Social Services. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Project. Mutual Housing California representatives are here. SHRA staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you. We do have some public speakers. We have Holly Wunder Stiles.
Good morning. I will make a very brief statement. I would just like to thank the county for their support. We have worked very closely with the county homeless coordinator and also the Department of Behavioral Health Services. And we look forward to the success of this project and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrea Noble.
Andrea Noble, I'm also a resident at Mutual Housing. I worked on Proposition 2, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Any other, I have no more members of the public. Supervisor Peters?
I just want to say congratulations on getting this project done. It's, these are not easy to pull all the separate parts together, and thank Supervisor Kennedy and SHRA and others that are helping produce this housing for low-income people.
Thank you very much. And I will say that this is, of the five years I've been here, this is one of the most exciting votes I'll cast in the five years. This is a great project. But I also would like to point out that, I'd like to look at the county considering, these projects take too long. We have considered a homeless or a housing shelter emergency in Sacramento County, and there has to be some way that we can fast-track projects like this. I think, I don't know if you look at some kind of a threat, well, actually, all projects, but particularly projects like this that target a population that we all know is an emergency. You know, nine months, two years, three years, I realize that there's federal hoops we have to jump through, and there's all of those things. But if we are the ones that are slowing the process, we being the county, whether it's planning or any other department, then we need to get our stuff together and make this a priority, and see that we can fast-track these somehow.
I'd just say, I 100% agree. The courtyard inn took multiple years, and from year to year, it wasn't, we weren't positive it was going to get done, we were having to wait. It isn't just the county, we should check that, but really, we need to work with our state and federal representatives on moving this process ahead faster.
Absolutely.
It's hard to sit here in these chairs and get beat on for not producing enough housing when, by the very jurisdictions that are causing it to go so slowly.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions, comments for the board? Is there a motion? I will move.
Second.
We have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained? Thank you. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Okay. For item 32, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the authorization to participate in the No Place Like Home program for the metro at 7th and Mutual Housing on the Boulevard Projects.
Good morning.
Morning.
Do you have a PowerPoint? My name's Cindy Kavanaugh. I'm County Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm here on behalf of a partnership with SHRA, my office, and Behavioral Health Services and the Department of Health Services. We have been working to create a pipeline of permanent supportive housing developments to jumpstart, if you will, to incentivize developments by giving them our coordination and working very actively to getting these projects in that pipeline of funding from various agencies. I'm here this morning to recommend two development applications for round two of the competitive state No Place Like Home program, which will result in 105 No Place Like Home units, and I'll talk more about those, and a total of 277 housing units. This is a joint effort, as I mentioned, and I would like to thank Jane Ann Zachary of the Division of Behavioral Health Services, and Christine Wykert and her staff of SHRA. As a reminder, the No Place Like Home program was approved in 2016. It allocates $2 billion in bond funding for permanent supportive housing for people who are experiencing homelessness, chronic homelessness, or who are at risk of chronic homelessness, and also living with a serious mental illness and in need of mental health and/or substance use services. I do note that it's a bond that is repaid from the diversion of 7% of Mental Health Services Act money that would otherwise come to the county for services. And in exchange for that diversion, we commit to these projects for 20 years of behavioral health services. I was being a little sarcastic. So I want to also remind us that we were successful at the state with our round one supportive housing developments. In June of this year, we received $9.9 million in state No Place Like Home funding for these two developments. And we also awarded one, excuse me, 2.8 of non-competitive funds that the county controls for a total of $12.7 million in No Place Like Home funds investing in these developments. These will total 87 No Place Like Home units and a total of 180 permanent supportive housing units. The first project is in Citrus Heights, called Sunrise Point, and the second one is Capital Park Hotel in the city and downtown Sacramento. You will see the status that these projects are seeking 9% tax credits. That is what was just referenced, as one of those things that may take at least a couple of rounds to compete and receive those very critical financing credits. We start our process well in advance. Over the course of this year, of the state issuing its NOFA, we have to do that, so we are ready to apply that the developments are in the shape we need them to be in. And so we did our local solicitation in April. We received the two applications in May. And then we continue to work with the developments and refine the developments once we see the state NOFA, which was not issued until the end of September. We're recommending projects today. We'll submit them to the state in the beginning of January, and we expect to know of awards Our local process is intended to incentivize these developments by three entities working together. We mirror our selection on what the state, how the state... We mirror our selection on what the state, how the state selects. I will note that we expect this round to be more competitive than the first round, that's often the case at the state, and these are not, nothing too unusual here. The threshold is eligible kind of development and eligible sponsor, financially feasible. I'm not going to go through the whole list, and on the competitive side, we really want to see projects that are ready and that have leveraged both development financing and rental operating subsidies. Key on that point is that these projects have received commitments from SHRA for housing choice vouchers, which makes them competitive on that particular item. Going to briefly go over each of these development applications and recognize and thank the development sponsors, both, well, I'll go over that, they are in the audience, both for Metro at Seventh and Mutual Housing on the Boulevard. The sponsor here is USA Properties and Jamboree Housing Corporation. It's located at the corner of Seventh and F in downtown Sacramento. Both projects will serve families and individuals. This project will have a combination of studios, one and two bedrooms. They will be serving, in the No Place Like Home units, folks in all of the categories. You'll see the requirements listed here, no less than 40% for chronically homeless individuals, no more than 30% for those at risk. That's primarily folks needing institutionalized care, and the remainder would be experiencing homelessness, all of whom have a serious mental illness. The services, Ann went over the kind of services, it's, it's a little complicated, but in each case, there's three plans. Resident services for everyone, No Place Like Home services provided by Department of Health Services, Division of Behavioral Health, and then for the non-No Place Like Home supportive housing units, there is another service plan operated by the development sponsor or their partners. This particular project has a new kind of tax credit financing called hybrid. It's a 4%, 9% combo. There's actually two developments for the legal and financing purposes, but it functions as one development, and Attachment Three contains project details on this project. This project is requesting $12.5 million, I think I mentioned, these are co-applications, which is different for the state between the county, the county is applying along with the development sponsor.
Okay, Cindy, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. Susan Peters.
Thank you. Cindy, I wonder if you could explain that hybrid tax credit? I know that may not be your specialty, but the tax credits are a really important element, as I've discovered on a couple of projects.
Yes, if, if.
And 9% being the one that developers want most, and sometimes they'll have to skip around when they get four, but you said this is a combination, so.
I could attempt to explain the benefit and the value and why this was created, but I would like to look to the development sponsor, and I see Darren Bobowski is coming up, so I'll have him explain it. I think it's a, it's an important question and thing to understand.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Board. Darren Bobowski with USA Properties Fund. First of all, I want to thank you for your consideration of this project. We think it's a great project to help as part of solving the homeless issue in the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento. The hybrid 9-4 is a fairly new structure that the Tax Credit Committee allows, and what it does is you break the project into two separate financing structures, a 9% and a 4%, the, with two separate ownerships, but what the Tax Credit Committee has done is in order to incentivize the more efficient use of the 9% and 4% project, to actually give you, let you take your subsidy from your 4% project and count it towards your 9% tiebreaker. So it gives you a really high tiebreaker and makes it much more likely to get funded on the 9% project. So it's, it's a more, what the Tax Credit Committee is trying to do is, larger projects are more efficient to build and to operate, so they're trying to incentivize that while still using the limited 9% program that gets you more equity into your project.
How long has this program been around?
They've been doing it, I think, two years.
Has it been successful?
Yeah, usually the hybrid projects almost always win in the tiebreaker, which is, is what it comes down, everybody's maximum points always comes down to a tiebreaker, and by using the subsidy on the 4% side to count your, toward your 9% project, it gives you a really high tiebreaker and, and almost ensures a success.
And then, a little more in the detail area, you said you'd break the project into two pieces. Could you briefly explain that?
Sure, so, we're going to do a commercial condominium, so the building is, looking at the building, it looks like one, one building, one project, and then, like a condominium, different parts of the building are owned by different ownership groups and financed as separate projects. But from the outside, it looks like one project, it operates like one project with one management company, which is sharing of expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
Cindy, you were talking about this, the idea that the No Place Like Home is, is dedicate, these, this project is going to require 40% for seriously mentally ill? Did I understand that correctly?
55 will be No Place Like Home units for seriously mentally ill. That is then broken down into categories of qualifying under homeless, chronically homeless, or at risk of chronic homeless, but 55, and I don't know what percentage that is of the 150, are No Place Like Home.
So, when I think of seriously mentally ill, I think of someone who is suffering from, maybe a small percentage of the population, suffering from maybe schizophrenia or borderline or, you know, complicated with drug addiction, and in many cases, those are the people who are chronically homeless because they are not able to understand that they have a problem and they are afraid of the, they may even be afraid of the solution for fear that they don't understand that they even, what they need. And so it's difficult for that kind of a person to make that decision to, to choose to participate in something like this. So my question, because this is something that comes to my office, I, I have constituents who have children or grandchildren who, they're trying to figure out how to get them, to, how to make them come to treatment, and they won't come. Does this, and, and I think that's a big part of the problem we have with the high-cost chronic homeless in the emergency rooms. Are those the kind of people who are in these places, or are these just the people who are there by choice? How are we, how are these people coming to this opportunity?
So, I will ask, I will look to Department of Health Services if they want to add, but these, all of the tenants come, of course, voluntarily. They are identified either through many outreach mechanisms where they are engaged in behavioral health services already, or, and still experiencing homelessness, or they are in an institution and engaged in behavioral health services. The first step likely is that engagement, whether it's from the street or from a shelter situation, but they're in some, they have been identified as persons experiencing serious mental illness, are likely already engaged at some level in behavioral health, and, and or identified through the outreach programs and identified in the coordinated entry system operated by Sacramento Steps Forward. So it's not one way, there's a range of, of folks, but certainly the, the, the goal is for our engagement and outreach programs to work to get folks on that, on that path of engagement so that they can then take advantage of this opportunity. Many, the folks working in the behavioral health services, the providers are experienced in that, and I would say that has not, I mean, while we know it's still a challenge to engage, we are not short of folks that have been engaged and can be housed in these developments.
Do, do we have, and I'll end with this, because this isn't specifically to this issue, but this is a concern to me that there might be, oh, I don't know if we have a specific program that's reaching for these, this one small population that is probably the biggest cost to the, to the county by virtue of their, you know, their use of emergency first responder services and emergency room, and there's no place to take them, and we can't take them anyway legally. Are we, how are we, I, I guess I'd like, I don't want you to answer now, I would like to have you think about this and talk to me about this. I, I'm interested in finding out how we can help those people, because I know that people who choose to come into these, this is a huge, wonderful opportunity, but there are those who are not able to even choose to come in, because in their mind, they don't, they don't understand.
And we would, I think.
Those are the ones I'd like to figure out how we can reach.
We, we would love to share with you more deeply, because there is a variety of outreach ways that behavioral health services outreaches and engages. The most recent is having an access clinician in the shelters, so there are numerous, and there's street outreach, et cetera, so, working with the Division of Behavioral Health would be happy to, to give you more detail on that.
This is exciting. Thank you.
And, and it's a good time to mention that the services provided by the Division of Behavioral Health are very robust. They are wraparound services once they are in housing, and many, many kinds of mental health services, but beyond that, connecting to the community and connecting to health and, and many other wraparound services for the residents. Ann covered much of the details on mutual housing on the Boulevard, which we are happy for this development in the unincorporated area of Sacramento. 50 No Place Like Home, 17 additional supportive housing for a total of 127. I won't go over the population targets and the services which are similar. The project financing is a 4% tax credit, and Ann also covered that. I did want to make one correction to the project detail in Attachment Six. We are requesting a total of 14.8 million in No Place Like Home competitive funds. 12.3 million is correct for one portion, but we are also requesting a capitalized operating subsidy reserve, known as a COSER, in the amount of approximately 2.5 million to meet funding operating shortfalls that, that exist in the project. So I did want to make that correction. We're, we're gonna, I, I do want to say this is very exciting for the team that worked on it, working with the development sponsors. We are very pleased for the, maybe midway in this process of getting these developments on the ground. We will submit the application in the beginning of January. Again, expect awards in June. We do not yet know about round three No Place Like Home funding, but we are already talking and working on, working on that from our local perspective. With that, I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Are there any other questions of the Board? I do have two speaker slips. Holly Wunder Stiles, followed by Andrea Noble. I'm assuming you're speaking in support?
Absolutely. I just have a brief comment. Again, I appreciate the support, and I, I'd like to speak to the timing a little bit. There are a number of factors that cause project timelines to be drawn out, but one of the key ones is funding, and so it really was the state voters that approved Proposition Two, that broke the logjam for this project, and is enabling us to move forward, and of course, the county commitment enables us to apply for those fundings. So, it's really, we're really excited to be participating in a Prop Two project and appreciate your support in helping us get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll clarify my comments earlier, and that's that I'm not pointing fingers at any organization or group as far as slowing the process down. I just, for those things that we as a county can control, I think we need to take a look at and see what we can do, if we can do anything better. Andrea, you're up.
Good morning again, I'm Andrea, and I do think we should fast-track some of this so we can get the people, the help that they need, the housing, because I'm a resident at Mutual Housing, a lot of people have come in, people have changed our lives, so we need to figure out how to fast-track this, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Supervisor Nataoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since there's been some commentary here about timing and so forth, I guess I'm curious about, on page five, the, next to the last bullet, why the county commitment would only be for 18 months? Again, recognizing the timeframes, the funding rounds, all the things that have to go together, that, that seems like a very short amount of time. I know they can come back to the Board resolution, Board for another resolution, but as I've been told many times before, that there is a cost of processing that, those items to the Board and so forth, so why would we only make this good for 18 months? Why not 24, 36, 48? Again, you want to get the housing delivered, but if this is, all that's gone into this, Cindy, doesn't make any sense to me that we're going to say that, you know, a year and a half from now, that if things aren't in place, you got to come back and go through this all over again. That doesn't make sense.
Certainly, we can come back to extend that. I think the intent is to really create that incentive to get these projects funded and moving. If there are other developments that are more ready at that point, we'd like to reassess. So it really is in that broad interest of, if something is not able to be funded, maybe it needs to be reworked, we at least want to look at it. So it gives us a check-in at that 18-month mark, and certainly, we're not going to walk away from something that is well on its way or needs to be tweaked in some way, and we'll come back to this Board.
Okay, I, I appreciate the explanation, but I guess I still, I'm curious why you have to have an expiration. You know, all the things you just said, obviously, are built into what brings it here today to the process you would use. I mean, it wouldn't be, you know, a forever commitment, but it just seems to me that 18 months, as things go, seems to be a fairly short amount of time. I guess it'd be nice if you could deliver the project in 18 months, but, anyway, Christine?
Right, so the 18 months also matches the SHRA loan commitment gap financing that you took action on earlier in the meeting, the 6.9 million dollars, and we do that because it allows for up to three rounds of 9% tax credit projects, and we find that, because they have two rounds a year, so that's three rounds in 18 months, we find that if a project hasn't been successful as a 9% tax credit project in that 18 months or the three rounds, then we probably re, look, need to look at it and maybe restructure it in some way, so we'd be back before you in any case after 18 months. We've just found over the years, that's a good timeframe to relook at a project of need-be.
Okay, so, when folks go forward, recognizing what you and Cindy just explained, Christine, then there's no hesitancy, because again, looking at all the ability to compete well and to have, you know, improvement on, on tiebreakers, as was talked about on the last project, then having an 18-month commitment period doesn't in any way diminish the competitiveness of it by saying, well, you know, they're on, county's only in for, you know, you're driving, obviously, for a timeframe to deliver, and what you just explained, but then that doesn't become, somehow, somebody looking at it and say, well, the county's only good for 18 months on this and, you know, run the clock out on them or whatever. So I, so I'm curious, again, you're much more knowledgeable, both of you and all of you, on the process that we use here, but.
I've never found that to be the case, and again, our goal after 18 months is to look at it and see how we can help the project succeed if it hasn't so far.
Right, no, I accept all that, that's fine. Again, it's consistent with, you know, with, you know, what you've explained and what's in the report, but, all right, that's all. Questions answered, thanks.
Okay. Are you done?
I am done.
Okay, any other questions of the Board? I have no more speaker slips. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. We do have one speaker slip off agenda, which we'll take right now. Frederick Gale. Mr. Gale.
Well, I have an open invitation for this Board to visit my area, North Highlands, and I want to thank you for being such an exemplary government body. I always enjoy coming to the county meetings, and you set the standard for that, and over the years, it has always been the best, and there have been other bodies that become circus or what have you, but you've been diligent, take care of business, and if you get a chance to listen to some of Aaron Copeland's, Oh To The Common Man, Our Town, and you'll see what I feel like when I come to these meetings, and thank you very much for the great job you've done, and the best of everything for you. you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gale.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. And we too appreciate your commitment to our community and your eloquence.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, if I could, just, again, I appreciate, certainly, as we've all said here, Mr. Gale's comments, but I would just say to Fred that people here participating in the process, I think, helps us to be better at what we do, and certainly appreciate his diligence over the years. He's sat through many, many sessions, and again, I think, you know, the more interaction, the better from the standpoint of decisions that we were called upon to make. So I want to thank Fred. Wish you a happy holidays, Mr. Gale.
Okay. With that, normally, I would take appointments, but your chair left them on his desk, so we will do that quickly in the afternoon. Is there any other questions of the Board?
Are we having closed session now?
We are having closed session?
Yes, we are.
Yes. So we will recess and go into closed session and reconvene at 2:00.